Good morning and welcome to our Board of Commissioners meeting. Today is October 10th, 2023, and I'm pleased that we have Pastor Jim Conrad, who's here with us from Town View Baptist Church. He will be providing our invocation followed by the pledge, and that will be brought by firefighter Casey Moats of Station 7A Shift. For those of you willing and able, please rise for our invocation and pledge.
May we pray. God, we gather as your people with grateful hearts, grateful for the gift of life, grateful for the gift of another beautiful fall morning in North Georgia, grateful for the freedoms that we enjoy as citizens of this country, grateful for the opportunities that are ours as citizens of this county. God, we pray today for those who come before the board, for the commissioners, that they might act with wisdom and discernment. We pray for peoples around the world experiencing conflict and pain and suffering today. God, we seem to sometimes run out of answers in human wisdom, and so we ask for your help to guide leaders in the right paths. And we answer the call of the prophet that we might seek justice, love mercy, and walk humbly with our Creator. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Our meeting is now officially called to order. Commissioners, before we go into presentations, we have three non-agenda items to be added to today's meeting. We will not be recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day in Cobb County, but we'll recognize that group at our next meeting. The first motion is to approve an agenda item to the presentation tab to recognize Cobb County Police for recently earning a prestigious title for their real-time crime center. Commissioners, I move that we add this into the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Commissioners. We also have an agenda item to add to consent, which is a license agreement with Kennesaw State University to use the KSU Center for a town hall meeting on October 19th, which will be open to the general public. Commissioners, I move that we add that agenda item as has been presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Yes, Commissioner.
Yes, I'd like the clerk to record my statement as found on page 410 of the current agenda.
Thanks, Commissioner Gambrell. Commissioner Broll, do you have a similar statement? Okay. Hey, Commissioner, no worries right now. The clerk, the clerk has it. She'll add it. Is there any additional discussion? Call the question. With Commissioner Gambrell in opposition. And then we'll have the final item, which is to add a resolution and contract extension for the continued employment of Dr. McMorris as county manager. I move that we approve that, or remove, approve adding that agenda item as has been presented.
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion? Okay, we'll call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Commissioners. We'll now begin with our presentations, and the first one is to recognize Melissa Alterio, our Director of Cobb County Department of Emergency Communications, for recently being awarded a prestigious award that will be shared during our presentation. And I believe we're also recognizing LeAnn Schultz, also with Cobb's Emergency Communications for being selected as Finest Trainer of the Year. If you can come on down, and we'll recognize you as well. Thank you. Commissioners, I believe we can all join the Commissioner down there.
Actually, we'd like the whole 911 team to come down. Thank you. So once again, our 911 team, E-911 team, Public Safety, have done it again. Another few awards that are recognized nationally, and we are so excited to present these to our director and our employee. That one goes to Melissa. I want you to hold it while I read about you. So, as a 911 professional, whether you're handling emergency calls, supervising staff, training new recruits, or innovating new ways of doing things, or making technology work, you play a vital role in connecting the public to emergency services in times of crisis. NICE is the name of the organization that is recognizing these two great folks today. And they are honored to be able to play a small part in recognizing emergency communications professionals who do this essential, life-changing work day after day through our PSAP's Finest Awards Program. In its 18th year, the PSAP's Finest Awards recognizes dedicated individuals and team standouts in emergency communications. Awards are presented annually in the following categories: Above and Beyond Lifetime Achievement and Director, Line Supervisor, Technician, Trainer, Telecommunicator, Innovator, and PSAP of the Year. Winners are selected by an independent panel of volunteer judges from the public safety community who evaluate nominees based on their accomplishments, their skills, and knowledge, and dedication, and professionalism. I'm excited to be here today to recognize two members of Cobb County Department of Emergency Communications. First, I would like to recognize the 2023 PSAP's Finest Director of the Year, Melissa Alterio. This isn't her first rodeo. She, she has won so many awards, as others of you have too, but we're very proud of her. And I know Director Register will want to say a few words in a minute, but... Executive Director Melissa Alterio is a leader who sets the tone for the Cobb County ECC through her positivity, empathy, compassion, and grace. In addition to promoting ways to boost morale and encouraging personnel and professional growth, Melissa holds regular meetings to update the ECC team on coming changes, new policies, new technology implementations, and also to seek feedback on what's working and what isn't and what's needed. Melissa Alterio joined Cobb County as Executive Director in May of 2021, during a time where many were burnt out, disillusioned, and suffering from low morale. Melissa has made it a point to get to know every employee, to know what drives them, what moves them, and what motivates them to do better. When she began her tenure as Executive Director, she set the tone of what to expect by coming to work dressed in a red uniform polo, just like everyone else. The message, she was just one spoke in the giant wheel that keeps the agency running. And even though she was the head of the PSAP, she made it clear she was willing to learn from everyone, a true team player. Using the feedback she received from initial one-on-one meetings with all of her staff, she formed several committees in the center with the goal of empowering personnel to contribute to policies, procedures, and important decision-making. She is also quick to include frontline staff in all of the center's successes. Director Melissa Alterio epitomizes a people-first attitude to leadership, and there are countless examples of how she embodies this every single day. She always goes above and beyond in advocating for her center and her personnel to be recognized as the heroes that they are and to be treated respectfully and fairly. Congratulations, Melissa.
Just very briefly, we're so thrilled to have you, Melissa. I mean, from the day you stepped foot in our building, even for your interview, we knew that you brought something special because of the experience that you have with your other organization. And we're so proud to have you here. You make us shine in everything you do, so thank you.
Well, you know, we're all proud of Melissa and her whole team. They do so much here. When you look at about 900,000 emergency calls per year, and her and her team answer the vast majority of them in under 15 seconds, what a great job. And not only is that a testament to the great job that they do, but it really does make the county a much safer place and gives our other responders time to respond. So thank you again, Melissa. Thank you, and congratulations for your award.
Okay, next up, I'd like to recognize the 2023 PSAP's Finest Trainer of the Year, LeAnn Schultz. This award was a tie, actually, I think. A trainer in Spokane, Washington, and LeAnn tied for this award. But we're not, we're not bringing Spokane here. We're just honoring Cobb. So, LeAnn has been employed with Cobb County Department of Emergency Communications for six years. She was selected to the position of Quality Assurance Evaluator in May of 2022 and has been in her role as Training and QA Coordinator since October of 2022. When LeAnn joined the Training QA Division, she brought with her passion, heart, and an eagerness to revamp how quality assurance was perceived in the department. LeAnn has made QA human and personable. Leann has made QA human and personable again. She created in services to explain the process of QA to personnel, and she took the time to reintroduce the functions of QA and why it mattered. She worked tirelessly to make the partnership between Training and QA that much more, I'm sorry, that much more seamless and people-oriented, so together, they could serve the needs of personnel. When Leann recognized the need for a place of relaxation and mental balance for employees to be able to get away from the stress of the job, she inspired the creation of the Grow Garden, which has become a sanctuary. It's a place of rejuvenation for frontline staff to enjoy the natural sunlight and decompress from a bad call while surrounded by Japanese maple trees, a rock garden, water fountains, flowers, and a hammock. Leann has implemented an open-door policy when it comes to QA. She also stays late at least three times a week to ensure that frontline staff on evening shifts have access to her for questions or guidance. Before Leann came into this position, QA was a very dark, dreadful, and mysterious process. And most individual, y'all can relate to that, I know. And most individual performance reviews felt like trips to the principal's office. Since her selection to the Training QA Division, employees now look forward to their individual performance reviews and are always seeking to expand their knowledge of protocols. Her goal is to keep QA people friendly and to engage personnel so they want to understand why it works, how it works, to everyone's benefit. On behalf of everyone at NICE, Melissa and Leann, please accept our sincere congratulations and these plaques in recognition of your service and accomplishments. Congratulations.
I'm just going to say, we've been up here a long time, so we're going to make it very short. I want to say thank you to Commissioner, Madam Chair, Commissioners behind me, Dr. McMorris, Director Register. I just have to say, it's a tremendous pride, honor, and privilege to serve this team. And I think I can speak for Leann and everybody who has actually won awards in just the last two weeks. We don't do it for the recognition, accolades, or the awards. We do it simply to serve the public and our responders. And I just want the public to know, the citizens of Cobb County, to know that you can rest easy at night knowing that you have a premier 911 center in this nation, serving you.
Well, we're very proud of you, and we thank you. Can never tell you how much we appreciate all you do for us day in and day out. And I know our first responders in the back, the police and fire, everyone that is here, even Metro Ambulance is here. So, I know they appreciate you telling them where to go. Okay, now we have to have a big group picture.
All right, our next presentation will be brought by Commissioner Gambrell.
And if I can have Senior Services up with me? Great, well, thank you for joining me. And I'd like to give this proclamation. Whereas discrimination against people because of their age can impact anyone, but ageism against older adults can impact their health, longevity, and financial well-being. And whereas there are an estimated 155,000 older adults in Cobb County over the age of 60 who are impacted by ageism. Whereas too many people believe and miss that older adults are not as sharp, productive, or savvy as younger individuals. These ideas are false and should be viewed through the lens of contributing and productive members of society. And whereas dispelling ageism in education, employment, housing, and healthcare will benefit all. Cobb Senior Services has been and continues to be at the forefront of changing societal perceptions of aging through its innovative programs and services. Now, therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim October 7, 2023, as Ageism Awareness Day in Cobb County, and hereby recognize that it is up to all of us to ensure that older adults are valued as capable, competent, effective, and valued in all areas of society. This the ninth day of October 2023.
I just want to first say thank you to Commissioner Gambrell for this proclamation. I think that for, I speak for all of us at Senior Services and the PSA Agency as well. I think that the work that we do every day, it's even more important to bring into light, you know, the stereotypes about aging that we still have in today's society. And we're all here to say, you know, there's a lot of value that our older community members are bringing to the table and to fight against, you know, these stereotypes. So, we do work every single day at Senior Services, and this is one of the more important parts. And so, we really truly appreciate this. Thank you so much.
Okay, we have one final presentation this morning. Again, it's to recognize Cobb County Police for earning a prestigious title of Real-Time Crime Center of the Year. For those associated with this presentation, please join me up front. Thank you. There's good stuff going on. Good morning. And once again, I'm pleased to help recognize the men and women here, and those that may not be up here who've been contributing to the success of our Real-Time Crime Center. The Cobb County Police Department's Real-Time Crime Center is committed to innovation and excellence in law enforcement, recently earning the prestigious title of Real-Time Crime Center of the Year from the National Real-Time Crime Center Association, recently on September 27, 2023. The timeline of the Real-Time Crime Center's development illustrates its rapid growth and success. Established in 2019 under the leadership of then Deputy Chief Van Hooser and Captain Billy Mitchell, and culminating in the completion of construction in February 2022, the Real-Time Crime Center has evolved into a forward-thinking group that leverages technology for an enhanced public safety, creating more effective and efficient law enforcement responses and investigations. The Real-Time Crime Center team has been strengthened by the addition of skilled public safety analysts, including Chris Frew, Ken Pettit, Brian Koch, Haley Stovall, as well as retired Major Stan Bell, Captain Darren Hull, Lieutenant David Thorpe, and Crime Analyst Supervisor Chris Ral Raven. Since its inception, the Real-Time Crime Center has played a crucial role in public safety-related calls for service, showcasing its impact on both Cobb's Police Department and other agencies within the county. Success stories range from identifying burglary suspects to providing timely leads in shooting investigations, insisting in homicide cases, and apprehending organized retail theft crews. Notably, the technology and people within the center played a pivotal role in locating an armed suspect involved in an Atlanta active shooter incident in May 2023. The recent recognition of the Real-Time Crime Center of the Year underscores the center's commitment to excellence and unwavering dedication and innovation in crime prevention and resolution. This acknowledgement positions our Cobb Police Department's Real-Time Crime Center as a national leader in levering technology for the betterment of law enforcement and community safety. Congratulations. So, Chief, I'm going to pass you the mic.
Thank you, Chairwoman Cupid, and thank the Board of Commissioners. We can't do any of this without their support and the funding. So, we're grateful for that. I just want to take a few minutes to just acknowledge a few people and organizations in the background that, a long time ago, Atlanta Police that started showing us their Video Integration Center back in 2011. The New York City Police Department that showed us their Real-Time Crime Center just a few years ago. Director Register, then Chief, who started a technology unit, which put Billy Mitchell in the place that he ended up being as the captain over our technology unit. And Billy did it just, he was a one-man show. We had nobody in the unit except Billy. And he did tremendous, tremendous work over a number of years to get this off the ground. Two companies locally, Fusis and Flock, both are local companies we partnered with to bring much of this innovation, young companies that we truly partnered with to make people safer. And then, you know, the ones behind the scenes that you don't know a lot about, Captain Hull and his team in the Real-Time Crime Center actually doing this work when nobody even really knows that they're doing it. And then they have the active shooter arrest and, of course, get some accolades for that. But this whole team is doing this daily. And last night, when everybody was enjoying the Braves game, they were all in the Real-Time Crime Center watching, being vigilant, and making sure that everyone was protected. So, really, just a thank you to all the hard work of many, many people that put this together. So, thank you. Congratulations to you guys. Y'all did a wonderful job. Director?
Thanks, Chief. I think if you put it in perspective, getting the Real-Time Crime Center of the Year, you have to look across the nation. There's 133 or so Real-Time Crime Centers. We're talking about New York City. We're talking about LAPD. And very large departments. And for them to recognize the hard work that they have been doing is truly phenomenal. And it's truly phenomenal to see what this has grown from. Chairwoman Cupid, when we went down to look at the LPR, as you remember, a few years ago, it has grown from that to this. And they've just done a tremendous job. And thanks for the vision that you've had and the vision that you keep having.
Is there another photo?
We have one more.
Okay.
Oh, really?
It's a special guest.
And I'm coming now. We're waiting on Chief. This is one of our newest canines. Chief. And this is Officer McMullin. And Chief just got back from Florida, from training. And he's still in training, but isn't he beautiful? Is he Belgian and shepherd, or just Belgian?
I just Belgian.
He's a Belgian Malinois, and he is... So, he's out there fighting crime every day.
We've paused meetings for several reasons, but this is the first time for a canine. I guess when your name is Chief, you know, you get the treatment.
He's special.
Respect, yeah, put some respect on that name. All right, next up, we have a public health update. And please, that Lisa Crossman is here with us today.
Good morning. I've had to follow a lot of acclaimed speakers in the past, but following Chief might be a tough assignment this morning. So, I want to take a moment of personal privilege before I get into the public health update and just say thank you to the Commissioners and the leadership of Cobb County and Director Register. Yesterday, we hosted our 20th Cobb Public Safety Golf Tournament to benefit Safe Kids Cobb County and the Cobb County Safety Village. And so, just a heartfelt thank you for that support over the years. We raise about $100,000 each event to be able to support Cobb County Safe Kids for them to hire technicians and to purchase car seats and bike helmets for families in need. We have just a tremendous committee that this year was led by Fire Chief Bill Johnson and WellStar's Cecilia Patelus, and a committee that works many, many months to make that thing happen. So, we had a beautiful weather day yesterday and a great event. And I want to do a special thank you to Metro Atlanta Ambulance and Pete Keonis. We celebrated 20 years of their support as well for that event. And they were our title sponsor yesterday. So, thank you so much. All right, so you had asked me to come and give just a brief public health update on a few topics. And so, I wanted to hit a few points. First of all, recently, we're getting a lot of questions again about COVID. And so, I wanted to hit a few high points. First of all, there is not any cause for alarm. We are very confident in where we are right now. Our rates are still very low. The hospitalizations rates are still low, and our guidance has not changed for that. Many people, we're seeing a bit of an uptick in recent testing. And so, we do want to remind residents that we, Public Health, is still providing rapid home tests free of charge at all of our health clinics. You can just pick those up. We also have two drive-through testing sites at our East Cobb WellStar Health Park and down at the South Cobb... labs, and then you get the results privately through a patient portal. We're hoping that making those free tests accessible to everyone will help getting folks into treatment, one, to increase their awareness, but also to get them into treatment as quickly as possible. And so many folks do not know that that was rolled out a couple of months ago, and that's available free to our residents. And on a different note, with our HIV epidemic, we are still providing free at-home rapid HIV tests. So those are available through any of our public health clinics. Folks can do those tests at home, and just like the COVID home test, it gives you the results right there at home. And then you can seek treatment through Public Health or your personal physician. Next, we're excited that we're providing more and more services related to maternal and infant health in our community. You may recall, several years ago, we were successful in securing a federal Healthy Start Grant. It brought $1 million a year for five years into Cobb County to help us assure that low-income pregnant women were able to get access to prenatal care and get the wraparound services that they needed to assure a healthy pregnancy. We are in the final year of that fifth year, but we're working hard to apply again to that, and so fingers are crossed that's due at the end of the year, and fingers are crossed that we'll be awarded another five-year grant for that Healthy Start Program. Residents may also not be aware that in this past year, we launched an electronic debit card for our WIC program. WIC is Women Infant and Children Nutritional Supplement Program. It is a national service offered through the USDA. Public Health is the sole provider of those services. And for many years, we've been doing it for decades, but for many years, women had to get the vouchers, the check vouchers that they used at grocery stores for healthy food. Now we've gone to an electronic debit system where all of those benefits are loaded onto the debit card, and families can use that at our local grocery stores to be able to get the food that they need when they need it. And so that's been a real ease and a change that's made it easier for families to access the nutrition education that they need and also access those foods. On a separate note, if you don't know, that brings several million dollars of revenue into the county, into our local grocery stores through that WIC program. So we're pleased to be able to support our grocers as well with that. Let's see. While I'm on maternal and infant health, I want to thank the Commissioners for the support through the Cobb ARPA program for our Babies Born Healthy efforts. This is bringing us several million dollars over the next four years to be able to serve women, low-income women in our community who are uninsured and may not have access to prenatal care. We partner with Wellstar and other OBGYN providers to assure that those women can get the prenatal care that they need, the quality prenatal care that they need. And also then Public Health does the wraparound services to make sure that those women and their families are linked to Safe Kids for car seats and safe sleep and to immunizations and WIC and other services in the community so that that family is set and ready to go when that baby arrives and that we do everything we can to help that baby thrive. So thank you for that. And then lastly, it's October, so wear pink. I want to take a moment to just encourage women in the community that please check with your physician or your health provider to get your mammograms according to schedule. And for those of you who aren't eligible for a mammogram, please use 2023 to get your preventive health screenings. Many people over the last few years have neglected their annual checkups and their annual dental checkups. This is really the year that we want you to get back and get current with your primary healthcare provider and get the checkups and the diagnostics that you need. Last, but certainly not least, we are enthusiastically planning for our South Cobb Public Health Center. We thank the Commissioners for the ARPA's support for that. We have, we expect that that health center will be a 30,000-square-foot facility on Riverside Parkway, just a mile or so from the I-20 interchange. We're expecting it to have all of the public health services that you'd want there, Healthy Start, WIC, immunizations, STI, diagnosis, and treatment. But we're also partnering with several groups in the community to be able to offer primary adult and pediatric care, community linkages, mental health services, and so that is full-blown in the works. We expect it to be about a $16 million facility there, and we've raised $13 million to date. So I am absolutely confident that in the next few months, we'll be able to raise the difference of that. But thank you again for your support of that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lisa. Do Commissioners have any questions for Lisa Crossman?
Just thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Appreciate you. With that, we do have a public hearing this morning, and I'm going to invite Jessica Glenn, our Community Development Director, up front so that she can talk us through our first public hearing regarding code amendments.
Good morning, everyone. Jessica Glenn, Community Development Agency Director. As the Chairwoman stated, this is our first public hearing for the 2023 code amendments. You'll recall that we had a presentation at the September Work Session where our staff and the experts on all the subject matter went through the amendments in detail. So this morning, I'll do a relatively brief presentation. If there are any questions, then we can have the opportunity to pull those subject matter experts up to discuss those, and then after the presentation, we would just ask the Chairwoman to open the public hearing. So the first chapter up for amendment is Chapter 10. This is the animals chapter. The amendment that's being brought forward is in order to reflect some new legislation that was adopted in 2012 by the Georgia General Assembly, and this is the Responsible Dog Ownership Act. So essentially, the changes here to this chapter are in order to come in line with this current state statute. It'll also change the name of Cobb County Animal Services officially in the code to, from animal control to animal services. That change was made in 2017, but that'll now be reflected in the code, and also just some minor cleanup of outdated references, definitions, and other verbiage. We also have changes to Chapter 50. There are actually two sets of changes in Chapter 50, the first being in Article 3, the land disturbing activities. And I won't go through these in detail, but essentially, the intent of this is to bring the land disturbance permit, the erosion and sediment control ordinance in line with the state model ordinance, so that you'll see that there are some updated definitions. It speaks to regulations protecting streams and preventing pollution that would result as a result of land disturbing activity. It speaks to the land disturbance permit application and fees, and also to what would happen if there is a violation of the permit. Goes into permit bonding, our responsibilities as the local issuing authority, and that is something that's very important to us as Cobb County to maintain because it does help to keep our plan review process a little bit shorter. It discusses the semi-annual review and also the plan approval process, so that would be done within 45 days whenever our plans are submitted to us. The next section, next article in Chapter 50, the environment chapter that is proposed for amendment is the noise ordinance. The noise ordinance says it currently stands as, it's very subjective, there's not really any measurable tools there to determine whether or not there is a violation of the noise ordinance. So what this amendment would do is to incorporate into there some decibel levels, depending on the time of day, some maximum decibel levels, and it would also give the police the authority to go out to use actually decibel meters to be able to measure that level rather than just making a guess about whether or not it's, our judgment call about whether or not it's a violation. So that way, it gives clear standards, gives a clear expectation for the residents, and also something for our enforcement officers, our police officers, to be able to utilize and enforcement. So, and some of the other changes here, you can see that during the hours of 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM, or 10:59, that would be sounds exceeding 70 dB, so a little bit louder during the daytime and a little bit quieter during the nighttime hours. And another change here that's noteworthy, the current noise ordinance does not allow for construction on Sundays. Under the proposed change, construction would be permitted on Sundays between the hours of 9:00 AM and 6:59 PM. That brings us to Chapter 78. This is licensed permits and businesses. Again, we have two sections here that are being proposed for amendment. The first is the precious metals dealers. This is to address online sales of watches, which is not something that was really contemplated at the time that this particular chapter was written. So it incorporates the definition of watch, speaks to the online sales and purchases of watches. They would be exempt from 78-392. This section requires in-person, an in-person photograph of the seller as well as fingerprinting. By nature of it being online sales of watches, that's not something that if you were like at your typical pawn shop, that would be expected. That wouldn't be the case with the online sales. Short-term rentals, as you'll recall, we adopted, or the Board adopted, the short-term rental code last year, last fall. We've had, you know, roughly, we started really accepting applications for short-term rentals in January of this year. The changes that were proposed, first of all, is that there would be no more than one short-term rental certificate per short-term rental property. It's in the code, but just adding some language to really clarify that, that, you know, you cannot have a short-term rental for one bedroom and another certificate for another bedroom, that it's one certificate per property. Some of the changes that were proposed, that were discussed at the BOC Work Session was to require a copy of any applicable restrictive covenants to be submitted along with the short-term rental application. As you know, the county is not in the position to enforce neighborhood covenants. At that last Work Session, we discussed removing that language from the draft amendment and adding into their language that would require homeowner or property owner association notification for short-term rental applications. And that way, the, any applicable homeowners associations or property owners associations would be alerted if there was a short-term rental certificate applied for in the neighborhood, and if there were restrictive covenants that would prohibit that, they would have the opportunity to take action in accordance with their own bylaws. And also, there was language in there speaking to clarifying the occupancy and parking. Section 134.1, the definition of single-family residence, is referenced in the code already, and it states that occupancy and parking shall be in accordance with 134.1 as well as 134.272 specific to parking. The language that was proposed was to add language in there to clarify no more than two unrelated adults, which is already in 134.1, and also no more than four vehicles parked outside. At the last Work Session, the discussion among the Board, and I believe the consensus that was reached was that we would not include that language in the code. So whenever we bring that forward for the second public hearing, you'll see those revisions reflected in the documents. And that takes us to Chapter 134, zoning. The first is pretty simple, just to add state licensed esthetician to the definition of professional office. It is similar in use to other uses that would be allowable under professional office, such as a dermatologist, and this is a state licensed profession or professional, so just adding that into what would be allowable as a professional office. Another just cleanup item here, 134.191, this is in the summary of bulk regulations. It's that chart with all of the zoning districts specified. There are a number of districts, R12, RA4, RA6, and RM16, that at one point had been disallowed from accepting new applications. Over the years, since 2015, 2013, even dating back to 2012, the Board has made amendments to begin accepting those applications again. It was reflected in the narrative specific to each of those zoning districts, but did not carry over into the chart, the summary of bulk regulations. So just cleaning that up so that it's clear that there's no conflict there between what the chart says and then what the actual narrative says. And then 134.266, gasoline pumps and canopies. We've added to this section some standards for electric vehicle charging stations, and that's not something that has previously been addressed through the code. Again, it's some newer emerging technology that continues to change. And we've seen that in some locations, specifically commercial locations, as these electric car chargers are popping up, they're a great resource to have, and they serve a purpose, but sometimes they're abundant and very rightly lit. And so the standards that are being proposed is that for commercial properties, non-residential properties, if there were going to be four or less charging stations, there would be standards to be met with regard to keeping them outside of the front yard setbacks and keeping them in the side and rear property areas, keeping them out of buffer areas, ensuring that there's no reader boards that are visible from the street, and also limiting some of the light spillage onto neighboring properties. And then for locations where five or more stations would be proposed, that would actually require approval by the Board of Commissioners as another business item, and that would give you all an opportunity to review it on a case-by-case basis to see the site plan, see where it's laid out, and ensure that proper steps are taken in order to ensure that that facility isn't going to have a negative impact on neighboring properties. And then also for residential property, just specifying that there would be one charging station allowed per residential use. And finally, this is in Part 2, Chapter 2, Administration. This is specific to the Cobb Marriott Coliseum and Exhibit Hall Authority. There was local legislation that was adopted by the General Assembly and signed by the Governor in 2018, I believe, and as a result of that, our code is being amended, what changes to the definition section, the powers of the authority, as well as to issuance of revenue bond in order to come in line with that legislation. So the next steps from here will be that we'll have the second public hearing on October 24th at 7:00. And just for reference, the changes to Chapter 134 were also considered by the Planning Commission, and they made recommendations to approve those, those changes to 134. And then that public hearing on October 24th would be the opportunity for the Board of Commissioners to consider adoption of the proposed amendments. So with that said, staff's glad to answer any questions, and we just ask the Chairwoman to open the public hearing.
Thank you. Before I have Board of Commissioners ask any questions, we'll go ahead and do the public hearing. For those who would like to address any of the codes that have been presented, you may do so at this time. Each speaker will have a maximum of three minutes to address the code sections that were discussed, and we'll accept a number, or an unlimited number, of speakers. With that, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing.
Madam Chairwoman.
Good morning.
Commissioners, my name, my name is Richard Groom. I am President of East Cobb Civic Association and represent ECCA in the following recommendations to the proposed amendments of Section 50 of the County Code. Section 50-76, which includes applications, plan requirements, and permit processing. ECCA recommends that this section would be a good location in the code.
see where it's laid out, and ensure that proper steps are taken in order to ensure that that facility isn't going to have a negative impact on neighboring properties. And then also, for residential property, just specifying that there would be one charging station allowed per residential use. And finally, this is in Part 2, Chapter 2, Administration, this is specific to the Cobb Marriott Coliseum and Exhibit Hall Authority. There was local legislation that was adopted by the General Assembly and signed by the Governor in 2018, I believe, and as a result of that, our code is being amended, what changes to the definition section, the powers of the authority, as well as to issuance of revenue bond, in order to come in line with that legislation. So the next steps from here will be that we'll have the second public hearing on October 24th at 7:00. And just for reference, the changes to Chapter 134 were also considered by the Planning Commission, and they made recommendations to approve those, those changes to 134. And then that public hearing on October 24th would be the opportunity for the Board of Commissioners to consider adoption of the proposed amendments. So with that said, staff's glad to answer any questions, and we just ask the Chairwoman to open the public hearing.
Thank you. Before I have Board of Commissioners ask any questions, we'll go ahead and do the public hearing. For those who would like to address any of the codes that have been presented, you may do so at this time. Each speaker will have a maximum of three minutes to address the code sections that were discussed, and we'll accept a number, or an unlimited number of speakers. With that, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Good morning.
Commissioners, my name, my name is Richard Grom. I am President of East Cobb Civic Association, and represent ECCA in the following recommendations to the proposed amendments of Section 50 of the County Code. Section 50-76, which includes applications, plan requirements, and permit processing, ECCA recommends that this section would be a good location in the code to put in a requirement for an owner or developer to show proof of filing any required open space and/or conservation easement for land associated with a development prior to the county issuing any land disturbance permit. For example, the language might read, "Prior to the issuance of any land disturbance permit, all open space or conservation easement for said property must be filed and recorded with the county and the state." This would help alleviate the problem of developers trying to sell or develop OSC or conservation easement property, and/or homeowners trying to use OSC land adjacent to their homes for personal use, such as we had with OBI 36-2023 in Walton Creek Estates off of Roswell Road. Section 50-258, enumeration of prohibited noises. ECCA suggests the following. In Section 50-258, Paragraph 6, exhaust, that generators be added to the list. In Section 50-258, Paragraph 8, construction or repair of buildings, that the language that allows Sunday construction be deleted. And in Section 50-258, Paragraph 12, landscaping equipment, that power washers be added to the list. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. We'll take our next speaker.
My name is Jill Flam, and I will be presenting why ECCA supports the code amendment for charging stations. Today, charging stations can go in any zoning category without staff or community review for a location on the property, lighting, or removal of parking spots. These stations operate 24/7 and are unattended. The pictures I'm showing you exist today on less than a mile stretch of Johnson Ferry Road. These are the most common type of station seen today. It takes about two hours for cars to fully charge. However, here is one at a Shell station. It is about 10 feet tall, as is demonstrated by the light standard, has a digital sign and solar panels. This sits on the side property line. Here are stations with digital signs on each side of the station at Park Air. Both types of stations with digital signs are allowed along a public street or next to a residence today. Next are the superchargers, also called DC chargers, taking less time to charge a car. Along with six-foot-plus-tall charging stations, they have seven-and-a-half-foot-tall utility cabinets that power and control the units. Here are five located at Target that handle all types of EVs. Some manufacturers want their stations to be seen by the public. Tesla installed five stations in the avenues of West Cobb's buffer legally. At the Avenue's East Cobb, they installed eight stations with two utility cabinets along Roswell Road. Please note that the Tesla logo is easily visible to passing traffic. While the ACC did get stipulations allowing for screening and darkening of the Tesla logo, it has been problematic to enforce these. A Tesla representative has stated that their new minimum number for charging station installations is 12. Please note that currently only two types of EVs can charge at these stations. Universal plugs are not currently available, and a different charging station would be required for other makes of cars. Here, finally, this is an installation that exists in District 2 along Interstate North Parkway off Windy Hill. 12 six-and-a-half-foot-tall Tesla charging stations, three seven-and-a-half-foot-tall utility cabinets, all visible from Interstate North Parkway. Here it is at night. This picture is not enhanced, the lights are that bright, and there is that much spillage. The intent of this code is not to prohibit charging stations, but to make sure that their installation does not affect the surrounding area with light, decreased availability of parking, or usurping the sign ordinance. The intent of the restriction for residentially zoned property was meant for freestanding external charging stations only, not those that you can install in your garage. It was not stated that way in the code, and we would not oppose the change.
I'm sorry, ma'am, your three minutes are up.
And that is our conclusion. Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll take our next speaker.
My name's Craig Harfoot. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
The last picture she showed of the charger in the garage, I don't think you've addressed that problem. There, there is a risk of fire, and if you're going to charge an electric vehicle, it should be outside your home, so it doesn't burn it down. And there's, that's a public safety thing. I think you should have some input from your fire department on that, because there are instances of this occurring nationally. As far as the electric vehicle thing, you know, you're going to need them, but we don't have a grid to support enough of them to, you know, we need a mix of everything. You need all kinds of things to get around, gas, we may even go back to horses for all, you know. But anyhow, the other thing was the, I didn't see a lot about the work-at-home thing. Anybody that has a computer can now, you don't need office space in downtown Atlanta, you don't need to get in the car, and that's a good thing. It saves them money. But your code needs to open up more, so people can work from their homes doing even more than just working on a computer. They should be able to sew without a bunch of pesky permits. You know, in the past, I mean, anybody can provide a service to someone else, somebody that's elderly in a house, someone can come there and provide a service to them in home. They could wash their car in their driveway, cut the grass. I mean, all these things, you know, you have all these codes about businesses, but the way things are going, you're going to need people to have jobs, and it all comes down to affordability, you know, so you don't need to spend my gasoline, electricity, whatever. And I think we're way behind the curve on all this stuff. And this, and even that award for the seniors today, it was, it's about, if you really don't want to have elder abuse, you gotta stop inflation. And the code should reflect this, because that is the greatest elder abuse there is. You price everybody out of their home and their ability to live.
Craig, I'm going to ask you to please refer to the code sections. I know it's easy to broaden it, but I know, just for the hearing, though, we have to be tight and refer to the code sections at issue. Okay, we'll take our next speaker. Hello.
My name is Shana Eichel. This is in reference to Chapter 50, Sections 256 to 257. First of all, I would like to thank Cobb County for hearing and listening to our complaints about noise. The amendments, at a specific measure of noise level, which if exceeded above the allowed decibel which describe amplitude, I would also suggest that we may want to consider an instrument that tests frequency, which is exhibited by measuring the hertz. So you may want to try to see if there is a tool to accommodate both amplitude and What the amendment lacked, though, and which is essential in order for the code to have teeth, is a section clearly defining the penalty as a result of code violation. Gwinnett County, for example, in its noise ordinance, has a penalty section which defines the penalty steps for violation occurring within 12 months. First violation is warning, second violation within a year, $250, third violation, $500, fourth violation, and on, within one year, is $1,000. It is crucial, I cannot emphasize enough how crucial it is that the penalty be embedded in the code. Police thus has precise directive to proceed and issue citation with each call. I will bring our own, our own experience. Within a year, police was called from our house about 10 times. At least three officers admitted to hearing loud nose. But again, at that point, the code, noise is subjective. What did the police do? One warning after the other. What is the result? Another week, another party, using loud bass, thump, thump, shaking.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Coming into our house.
So, ma'am, your time is up.
Thank you very much, and please take it into consideration.
I hadn't thought about it until she spoke, but I was wondering if in that noise ordinance, if it's also going to include the really, really, really loud, jacked-up cars? Because I'm hearing that waking up, and I'm not even close to the streets that I'm, that I'm hearing it from, I mean, I'm pretty far away, but even if I'm walking along sandy plains or scuffle grid or whatever, and it's like boom, and I'm wondering if that's going to be included too, because I think that would be really good. It's hard enough to find, to catch them anyway when they're drag racing, but it would be nice. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more speakers for this public hearing? Not seeing any, we'll go, oh, yes, sir, please come on up. You're, I'm sorry, sir, you're going to have to speak from the podium if you'd like to be a part of the hearing. Thank you. Then this is not appropriate for you to, it's not appropriate to address the board like that.
I think this gentleman signed up for public comment.
Okay, okay. Thank you, sir. We have a public hearing just for the code, and then after this, we'll do public hearing. Thank you. No problem. Do we have any more speakers with respect to the code amendments? Okay, not hearing any. Jessica, I'll ask if you can join us again at the podium. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments for Jessica? Commissioner Sheffield?
Hey, Jessica, just wanted to address the construction hours on Sunday, and is there a reason, or what's the reason that we include it, Sunday for construction?
I would defer any questions about the noise ordinance to the county attorney's office and to the police department. They worked on those. I know Brian Johnson's here, as well as staff from PD, so perhaps if it's okay with the board, they could come up and speak to that.
Please.
The thing about the construction on Sunday, from us talking to some of the citizens and going around, and it was more toward the residential side of them being able to do construction or building at their residential properties, because a lot of people are having to work extra hours, second, third jobs, and they just don't have the opportunity to get stuff done at their house just during those days while they're at work, and then they can't do things at night. So it just gave them a short amount of time on Sunday for them on their residential properties to be able to do some work, repair, some roof work, you know, building an extra building in the back, doing whatever they needed to do.
I see. Thank you. My only challenge with this is while, you know, this may accommodate the one-offs and, you know, people in the situation that you just described, it doesn't exclude, like, developments in larger projects. So that's where I have a challenge with including Sunday.
Commissioner Gamble, would you like to add to that?
I'd like to tag on Commissioner Sheffield, because oftentimes, if it requires that type of construction, they need to have a permit. So my question would be, and I don't know if John Peterson can answer this, if they got a permit, would it be allowed only if they have a permit? And then it would be restricted to certain days? And then that, again, it wouldn't be, you know, mass development? And that way, would, it would address some of the issues the officer was talking about? I don't know if that's kind of maybe what you were thinking, or?
Yeah, that, that makes a lot more sense to me. I just don't want the community to be vulnerable to construction noise at a larger development on Sunday morning.
Well, and a lot of the, the work that may take place even on a single-family property, you know, your weekend warriors may require a permit, for instance, if they're putting up a little shed in their backyard. So we can, we can talk with Lieutenant Pettit, as well as Brian Johnson, and see what the best way is to maybe work in some language there to address the large-scale developments and the commercial development, but to still allow that leeway, if that's the desire of the board for the single-family homeowners to do work on their own property on Sunday mornings. We can work through that.
Seeing nods, yes.
But, but I also think, to Gambrell's point, and perhaps maybe John, you can shed some light, if it's clear in the permitting process, then I'm not sure that we would need to have it here.
On the zoning, I mean, is this a zoning question or a permitting question?
Well, if I can interject, Commissioner Sheffield, it's a permitting process, because oftentimes, when, I'm sure you, I know we get calls on the big developments, you know, the mass developments, but on the smaller home developments, they usually don't understand they need a permit when they're building a shed, or they're doing some other multiple alteration to their property, which then requires them to come back for a VZA hearing, right? Because they erected the shed. So that's why I was wondering if they wanted to do something on Sunday, again, tie it to the permit, so that way the county knows, you know, that some type of alteration is going on, that's going to require mass construction, that's going to cause a lot of noise to potentially bother the neighbors. That's why I was thinking of tying it to the permit.
Right. We can, we can talk through that, and that may be something that we incorporate into the permitting process. I think that would be on the permitting side, as well as incorporating something into the language to make it work right from a code standpoint. So if there's something that we need to do from a permitting standpoint to indicate on a permit, and like you said, Commissioner, a lot of times, those weekend warriors unfortunately don't know they need to come in and get a permit from us, which is a whole nother issue.
Exactly.
But we can talk through that, yes.
Commissioner Broll's been wanting to weigh in. I know Commissioner Sheffield started the conversation. Commissioner Broll, is your comment with respect to the conversation?
To this, this and more.
Okay, we'll keep it here, and then let Richardson weigh in.
Could we not restrict it to individual home repair or construction, not, you know, developers putting in a subdivision or commercial?
I think that's exactly what we could look at with police, as well as with the county attorneys. We'll get that language in there, so that it would be specific to your, your single-family homeowner just doing work on their own property. That's what we would look to do.
Okay.
To make that the exemption.
And they would still be subject to the hours, the decibel readings and hours and all?
Right.
Yeah. I, I wouldn't support construction for builders or developers on a Sunday.
Right. We can, we can work with them, so come up with that language, and so it'll be reflected in the, the next amendment. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Are there any related comments? Okay, good.
Yeah, I'll be brief. My, my preference is certainly to have language clarification in the code as the recommendation. We can review the permitting process, but I would think that's going to be a little bit longer of an analysis, so.
It would certainly need to be something that's included in the code, because as code currently stands, it currently prohibits all construction on Sunday, so if we're looking to allow a little leeway, that would need to be addressed through the code, and I think to make sure that it's clear that this is only for single-family homeowners on their own property.
Thank you.
On the penalties, when we give a citation, isn't it up to magistrate court, to the judge to enforce or give the penalties or the fines that they have to pay?
Yes, ma'am, all that's been set by them, and they'll just stick to the same standards that they have now, unless they decide to change it later on. But whatever their standards are with the issuance of citations during a calendar year, or this is your second, third, as it continues to go up, then that'll be through magistrate court. And if that's something that y'all want posted in there from magistrate court, so people can see it, then that would be something that we could put in there, we can get in contact with them.
Okay. And then on the frequency, Ms. Eichel referenced the?
Yeah, I assume she's talking about?
Do they have the frequency level as well?
She's probably, from what I could tell, she's talking about the C weighting. There's, there's different types of weighting when it comes to sound, and sticking with the A weighting, that's mainly what our ears hear as human beings. And from talking and calling around to many acoustic professionals, engineers, sometimes when you start getting into megahertz and C ratings, you can have some discrepancies, because the meters are picking up things that our human ears aren't hearing. So then it may read something that we're not hearing, and now someone's getting a citation that it was not really what they were sending, it was another sound that none of us could hear. So I assume that's what she was referring to, so.
Okay. She's still in the audience, if she wants to talk to you afterwards?
Sure, I'll be, I'll be happy to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I'm sorry, sir, we closed the public hearing for code amendments. Right now, we have?
No, you can talk to Officer Pettit in the back.
That's okay. Okay, so this is atypical, that we've had two people approach during the middle of a meeting. If there are any questions for staff, our staff is seated at the back of the room, we have an officer out the back, too. You can also see if they can assist you, but it's not appropriate to approach the dais during a meeting unless you've been called forward. Okay. With that?
And the public hearing is closed.
Correct. Do you have any additional questions? Commissioner Sheffield, did you have, okay, Commissioner Burrell? Commissioner Richardson? Yes.
Okay, so I did have a, just for clarification sake, on the home electric charging systems, was there a reason for the restriction to one? Is it due to risk of fires, or?
I think that the recommendation from the East Cobb Civic Association, and the point that Ms. Plam made, that it really was specific to those outdoor standalone chargers, I think we can clarify that, and that it's not so specific to a charger that's in your house. Zoning is really focused more on what people see when they drive by your property, and how what you're doing on your property impacts what your neighbors are experiencing and the effect on the neighborhood. So with regard to some of the questions about fire hazards and those sorts of things, with electric vehicle chargers, charging continuing to be an emerging technology, that would not really be appropriate to be addressed through the zoning code. Those things are constantly being addressed and reviewed as the International Electric Code and similar codes by the International Building Council, life safety codes, as those continue to be updated, they'll take those into account, and then, of course, Cobb County adopts those and implements those.
Okay, thank you.
But if there is some interest on the board to clarify that the residential restriction is specific to one standalone outside charger, and that it would not apply to chargers in your garage that nobody sees, we can make that change in the language, that clarification.
Thank you. And I'm seeing a nod on this side, nods, yes, okay, great. And then the second thing, I know we discussed it in the last, in the work session, but just to make sure that for the language on the charging, the electric charging stations, because I was, I was confused on the, whether it was the parcel or inside of the parcel, where it's saying it couldn't be next to residential, we were specifically talking about the adjacency of the charging stations themselves, not the parcel being next to the residential. And so just making sure that clarification is?
We'll make sure that's clear in the, in the language. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you. Commissioner? Yes, please go ahead.
I also like the recommendation that ECCA made for 50-76, because I know this does tend to be a problem with our, used to be CS and now our OSE, where the conservation space doesn't get recorded. So is there a way that we could work with legal to see if we could get that included?
Absolutely. I think that's an excellent recommendation. We'll be glad to talk with legal and see how do we appropriately work that into the language to give us that opportunity, yes.
Well, we're happy to look at it and see if it would allow, because it's restricted by state law. And so I don't know if we necessarily tie the two together, but we'll look at it and see whatever we can do, so.
So if we can't tie it to state law, can we make our own subsection then?
We'll, we'll take a look at it. I don't know if we could tie the release of an LDP related to an additional condition. We'll have to look at that.
Okay, so then I guess, Jessica, my next question would be, is when does a plat get recorded with Superior Court? And could we tie it to when a plat gets recorded? Because I know, I know site plan, they approve the plat, but then when does that plat get recorded in Superior Court?
I understand the concern that you have, Commissioner, so let us work with the county attorney's office, and I, I understand the end game, and what we're trying to get to, and I agree, we want to be sure that we have those conservation easements recorded properly and at the right time. And so we'll work with the county attorney's office to make sure that we do that in the right way, that it's in line with state law, and if there's a future amendment that's needed to our code to make that happen, we can, or maybe it's a process. But we'll work on that with them, and then be glad to provide an update to the board, and potentially update to the language if that's appropriate.
Okay. And I concur with that, wholeheartedly.
And then going back to the noise, we didn't discuss this, but it was added on generators and power washers, so I didn't know what the board thought about those that were brought up as far as being added.
I'm supportive of those recommendations.
To be allowed, to be allowed, or restricted?
To be included and revised.
As noise. And again, our officers, when they have the decibel readers, thank you to Commissioner Burrell, you know, if somebody does have a generator and it's questionable, then they can confirm it that way.
Okay. But I think you're going to have to look at an individual case, because what if it's an elderly person who's on oxygen or something like that, that they have to, and the power goes out? I mean, how are you going to enforce that? So, I don't know. That's going to be?
Don't want to be unduly onerous.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the first one for generators probably needs a little bit more exploration, but the last one for power washers can probably be included. That's more of a decision. I don't know.
So in the past, if you can email this to us, and we can consider it for consensus, to see what can be proposed, sometimes in years past, we've had code amendments brought forward with two options, do you want option one or option two? And then we can deliberate that.
And so, just so I'm clear, are you asking to have proposed changes emailed to you, or?
Well, right now, some changes are being proposed, but I can't tell if there's consensus on all of the things being proposed. So if you can send us an email, perhaps you can just take a poll, perhaps, from, from that, if we want to see that being proposed? Or an option I've seen in the past is where we've had more than one option presented as a code amendment, and we've just voted on, do you want option A, B, or C?
Okay, we can, I'll talk with the, the departments that have worked on all these codes and see what the options may be. I will say with the, the timeline, the agenda items are due Friday, so we've got a very quick turnaround to make those changes to the drafts that we put forward. But I think, I think on the things that we're hearing, the things that I'm hearing here, and I let you all tell me if you think I'm off base, the generator things, we can look at that and, and see what the options are, Commissioner Burrell. I know you raised a question about the, you know, what about someone who's elderly, or someone who has medical needs? So we can explore that, talk with police. I'm frankly not really sure what the typical noise level is of a generator, so we can see what the options may be for that, and provide some options to you all as a board, like I is with the, the power washers. But yes.
I just wanted to add some, ask for clarification, actually, on the paragraph that references exhaust. From reading this, it appears that it's outdoors, it says to discharge into the open air of an exhaust of any stream, et cetera. So just for clarification, does that speak specifically to vehicles, generator, generators related to vehicles? Because the description or the example that the commissioner gave for oxygen tanks is, in my mind, would be different.
Let Lieutenant Pettit speak to this.
Can't read generators, that's what I say.
Chair, looking at the definitions part?
It's on page 36.
And then while he's looking that up, if I can just weigh in, I think where this is coming from is we've got some individuals that are wanting to go off the grid, and in going off the grid have gone to generators only. So it's not in the situation like Commissioner Burrell's saying, if we have a power outage, they're using this as a backup. This, this is individuals that are choosing to go off the grid and go into an alternative energy source.
And that's my thought, I just wanted clarification, because if that is the case, I'm just trying to connect the dots between that and the point that she's making regarding an oxygen tank.
I assumed you're talking about running with the generators and the exhaust, well, the exhaust stuff here was taken from the code section that was already used, so just giving the definitions of, of things. With the, with the generators, when it comes to the thing with oxygen, people needing to use in their house, a lot of times with us as police, it comes to a point of discretion. I mean, you come to a place and it may be too loud, and in terms, you're going to find out why, if all the power's out in the area and someone's needing something for medical treatment for anyone in the house, most, I would say, all your police officers would use their discretion and not write someone a citation for needing a generator with all of that being out, whenever someone's needing medical attention inside their home.
Right, but also, I mean, if, even in a storm, whether they're, they need medical equipment or not, they lose power?
Correct.
How do you prohibit using a generator to keep your food frozen and, and your lights on, and that kind of thing?
You are correct. And again, I believe it would be common sense of the officer that goes out there to determine if they know all the power's out and someone's needing to use a generator, I would assume they're not going to write them a citation for that.
Can we make, can we specify if it's an emergency, or loss of power, or medical, or whatever? Or just, I don't know why generators would be prohibited, period, but?
Here comes Richardson and then Sheffield.
Yeah, I would just say, to reiterate the original point, the biggest thing that we're struggling with is we don't know what a loud generator is, or a quiet generator is, and it may be, maybe a normal generator meets that normal noise level, and so we wouldn't want to do that. This would be, this would be in the situation that something is really pronounced, and I don't have the information right now to be able to decide that, so. No, no, I know that, but I'm saying, like, I don't know if that's a normal generator. I don't know if a normal generator's at 7 DBs. I would be more interested in an abnormal structure that's causing pronounced noise than a normal, average one that you go by from the store.
Yeah, and that would be hard. I mean, every generator, new, old, was going to have different sound levels, you know, that's going to be hard to say. A generator should be this decibel reading, it's going to be kind of hard to determine that through all the makes, models, and how new or old they are.
Right, I just mean, like, if you were to take the most commonly purchased ones, and they're all at 80, then no, it doesn't make sense to put it here, you know? But if one tends to be at 200, then it's like, okay, that one is an outlier, it's a problem.
Just quickly, confirming with Brian and Chief Van Hooser, I think perhaps what we could do is propose some language that, for generators, would make that, make an exception for power outages and, you know, storms, those types of emergency events, we can just write that language into the code. Sound good?
And then I have one more request.
Okay.
Jessica, I don't want to put more work on you, but I know that the code amendment package is online, on cobbcounty.org, on the front page, the main website page. Could we break it down with a link to each chapter that we're discussing? Because I'm getting emails from people who are just interested in noise, or short-term rental, or zoning, or whatever, and rather than send them the whole package, they're requesting just the noise ordinance, or just the short-term rental.
And that's, that's something, we can work with Ross's group and communications. We also put it on our website. I know for community development, we can certainly break it up by.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we have the complete package on our website, but they have them by chapter on community development, so we can just link to their page.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I have one inquiry with respect to the noise ordinance. I thought it was unique, took me back to school, with requesting that we not only read decibels, but also read frequency. Has there been some consideration of that in the past, as we've looked for ways to measure sound?
Not with the, because your frequencies are going to be different in other areas. So most of our, the standard in law enforcement in the area is using the DBA reading, because that's what the human ear hears, and that's what's going to be disturbing the peace, and, you know, causing people to hear someone else's noise while they're trying to rest or trying to do other things. So the, the common thing in law enforcement, especially in our area, is just the DBA reading on the decibel meters.
Okay.
And you're also looking at the time that an officer's there. There's a limited time that they have to stand there and take these readings for, you know, a certain amount of time. They can't stay there for a long period of time to continue to do separate readings of things.
I hear you. That gets us to another comment made, and we had some discussion around this during the work session with commissioners with respect to mufflers, cars that are just revving up, and I know the difficulty in catching those, but there have been a lot of complaints that we've received over time. If you can just address that point that was made by one of these speakers, please.
Yes, ma'am. During our work session, I know you, you guys brought that up, and there's already for vehicle exhaust noise on the roadways, there's Georgia code section, it's 40-8-71C that allows people, or allows officers to write citations for the, you know, excessive exhaust noise coming out of their vehicles, any things that they do aftermarket, cutouts, things like that. Now, with the noise ordinance that we're proposing, if they're on their private property, and they're revving their engine, and they're doing these types of things, then we're going to be able to handle that. It's just when people are going down the roadway, we just, we're not standing out on the side of the road, or in our vehicles have decibel meters behind cars driving down the roadway, and that's, it's hard to get at that point in time. But if they're on their property, or, you know, in a parking lot, things like that, and we can get that reading, then in turn, we'll be able to write that citation for that.
Okay. Particularly if somebody's doing this on a recurring basis, then it's easier to make that complaint and say, generally at this time, we're hearing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Commissioner Richardson, yeah?
And I believe it was brought up in that work session as well, that there are, there are meters, or the, the, sorry, some of the license plate readers, that they could be equipped with those types of sound detection devices as well. I think you said it was like $10K per?
Yes, it's about $10,000 per unit. And then you have to decide where you're going to put them, how many you want spread, and it would just, when a car went by, it would read the decibel reading of it, and it would take a picture of their tag, and you kind of like have the, the bus, you know, arm stop, and then it would send the information through saying, this car at this location reached these decibels, and then you'd be able to send them a citation for it, but it is very costly.
Thank you.
Commissioners, are there any other comments or questions regarding any other element of this code? Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. With that, we are now moving on to public comment, and the gentleman who arose before, I believe your name will be called for a public comment if you sign one of the sheets that we had up here. Okay, great.
Thank you, Chairwoman. As the board provides the podium for public comment, it's appropriate to review the related?
As the board provides the podium for public comment, it's appropriate to review the related meeting rules. When you come up and speak, please state your name. And if you, excuse me, if you are speaking on behalf of an organization, all comments should be addressed through the chair. Public comment is not a dialogue with the board, but an opportunity for speakers to provide their comments to the board. The comments should not be impertinent, derogatory or offensive. To that end, the board encourages, regardless of the topic, for the audience to be respectful and courteous to the speakers. Everyone attending this meeting should be, should give others the right to both listen and to be heard with, by treating each other's with civility. Statements made during the public comments portion don't necessarily reflect the opinions of the board or the administration of Cobb County Government. And there's a five-minute timer that's down here on the floor for you to keep track of your time. With that, the first public speaker is Kevin Redman.
Good morning. My name is Kevin Redman. I wasn't planning on talking about this, but since the nine-one-one proclamation was brought up, I actually called nine-one-one for the first time in my life a few weeks ago. I was actually driving on Lower Roswell, taking my daughter to school. There's that intersection at Lower Roswell and Old Paper Mill. I'm not sure you're familiar with it. There's that crazy fork in the road. Anyway, some truck with a trailer plowed into this like little red car. It looked like it just happened. So I pulled over. My daughter's in the car, so I told her to stay in. I get out and, you know, the guy in the truck was all shook up. And then I opened up the, the door of the red car and it was this young woman who I think was like high school age. And she was like in tears and she had called her parents and nobody had called nine-one-one. So I called nine-one-one and the director was talking about fifteen, they picked up in like two seconds. And then the police were there in like less than two minutes. So I don't know. It was this great response. Any accusations of the Cobb County Police not being an East Cobb are, is untrue. Everything was handled. And so anyway, it was just kind of a terrible experience for everybody who involved in the wreck, but the Cobb County showed up in good form. So anyway, I am on the community cabinet for Commissioner Derek Richardson. And I wanted to plug in a bit that we have coming up on Friday, October 20th at the Senior Services Center at eleven fifty Powder Springs Street. It'll be a cybersecurity event. So we are working with the Information Services Department. It's on a Friday, so the Cobb County employees can show up, but we're also inviting the public. And we're trying, we're going to talk about prevention, but also what county resources are available if something does happen to you. So we'll have the Cobb County Sheriff's Department, the DA's office will be there, Department of Homeland Security, Cisco is showing up, Splunk, my company, will be there. So I'll be hosting a panel toward the end of the day where we'll be answering questions from the public, just talking about best practices of keeping your data safe, keeping your, your system safe. If you own a phone or a computer, this should be relatively important to you. So, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you can't make it. But that will be on Friday, October 20th from nine-thirty AM to four PM at the Senior Services Center. And I also just wanted to say a quick thank you and a plug for the Cobb 101 experience that we just had. It was ten weeks. We just graduated last Thursday. I think about thirty of us were there. And for those of you who don't know, you spend ten weeks. We met with community development, public safety, water, finance, support services, DOT and public services, learning about what everybody does, budgets, number of staff, vacancies, like field trips and understanding what everybody does. And it was really eye-opening and just added a lot of content and context to what we're, everybody's discussing here. So I highly recommend anybody sign up for that. I don't know when the next one will be. But just anyway, thank you. I know this was a project of yours that you wanted to stand up and Dr. McMorris, all the work that you and the staff did to make it happen. So thank you very much. So thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Donald Barth.
Good morning, ladies. How are you? I brought something for you. Two cents. I'm going to put my two cents in today, just like always. And that's all it is. It's worth exactly that, two cents. Don't be thinking sploshed. You're going ahead of yourselves. Let's stick to the program. When we come up here and speak, we've got to come up with some rules and regulations of who is here. We saw something two weeks ago. I think the commissioner is shaking her head up there, Chairwoman. There was some discrepancy there. You sign in, you speak. I don't need to go hire a wino to show up here at eight o'clock in the morning to sign me in. Here, here's $10. I'll get you a bottle. Stay here. Sign me in. I'll get there when I get there. I could have come in right now and saved myself two damn hours. It's important to know that out of seven hundred-plus thousand people in Cobb County, there's only twelve speaker slots. If you want one of them, get up, be here on time. Yeah, you're in a shark frenzy over there. It can get ugly. You know it and I know it. So if you would set up some rules, just come up with a game plan. What time are you going to put the list out? Put that on the internet. The list will be published out here. It will be sitting on that table at eight forty-five for a nine, six forty-five. These are the important things. We're adults, but we don't always act like it. There's a lot of people that go me first. Daddy ain't going to get it. So we need you to play mommy and put us in our place. Now, I went to a great meeting the other week. I thought we were going to talk about the damn two cents sploshed or something, but we went around and then around and around. I did get to meet with Drew Ressler, and what a cool dude. You know, that's the important part is you get to meet the people that do the work for you. Not only does he work for us, he lives with us. He's part of the community. We heard great stuff. That's the stuff that makes the community worthwhile. Anyway, I could beat y'all to death over the two cents. I'm going to leave it right there. I want to remind somebody up there, it's two cents. It doesn't mean anything. What I said today goes out the door when I go out the door. So we're going to listen. We're going to treat each other with respect. Please get together, let some citizens get in. Hey, we're not all out here for ourselves. We're here for community. Thank you.
The next speaker is Randy Barker.
Good morning. My name's Randy Barker. I'm a lifelong county resident. I live in the Oakdale Community down south of Smyrna. I'm here today because of the, discuss the new lease agreement with the transfer station. Tell you a quick story. In April 2020, I went to the transfer station. I go there three or four times a year. And they asked me an unusual question. They said, is your trash food? They never ask anything like this. And I said, no, it's just household trash that I couldn't recycle. So then they charged me $10, which is a dollar fifty more than the allowable charge. So I protested, but they insisted on the $10. And a dollar fifty is not a lot of money. It was a, it is an eighteen percent increase over what they're allowed to charge. I followed it up later with the manager and she said that they had the right to charge $10 for anything other than food. And that's contrary to the, their lease agreement. She said that she based her, their decision on EPD requirements. I've been to EPD, I've been through all their publications. I can find nothing that supports their position on this food distinction and the trash. Since that time, I've been back. For a few visits, they still ask the food question. Then after a while, they quit asking the question at all. They just automatically charge you $10. I've got a video of that from my last visit. So anyway, I, I, I have to see the agreement now is coming up for renewal and they've requested a five-dollar-and-fifty cent increase above their eight fifty. So there again, five fifty is not much, but when you look at it, it's a sixty-five percent increase over what they were getting. I think that's absurd and I don't see how county staff could have supported this. And I think my little story here about them charging the extra dollar fifty, like I said, it's not a lot of money, but I think it reflects poorly on the company. They're doing something to play loose with the rules to cheat people out of this money. So I'm going to ask that y'all please reconsider this lease agreement and look at a little more detail at this. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Christine Rosman.
Hello again, Christine Rosman. I, like Kevin, was at the Cobb 101, enjoyed it very much and highly recommend it. I know that there was a selection process. I appreciate that I was selected to be part of it. And like I said, definitely recommend it. I wanted to talk a couple of things. I've brought this up before on the consent items. I think Congress is kind of doing something like this now instead of having everything bundled because there were congresspersons that said, you know what, I don't want to go, I, I like this, but I don't like this. Like I don't like $3 billion going to Ukraine, but I want all of this. So they're starting to break it out. And I was hoping that maybe we could start breaking things out more on the consent items. Which, speaking of the consent items, I noticed that on consent items number, on the economic development, twenty-seven and twenty-eight, to approve a business investment grant, and I'm wondering where that grant money comes from, if that's taxpayer dollars? And if it is, I was just curious what the vetting process is on how, because it seems like the Board of Commissioners is kind of acting as a angel investor to companies. And so I did a little, you know, just looked these companies up that did get these grants, which I don't know how much they are worth. But the High Performance Sports and Training Solutions, High Performance, I guess Doing Businesses, High Performance Elite. And another one, I looked up the Ambrosia Events and I saw that she has been, Lenisha Cooper's been in business for quite some time, like eleven or twelve years. But, or that, that business is, but I couldn't find anything other than it being with the Secretary of State. It could be that she's doing business as the Go-Go Party Bus, which is a thriving business, which is great. It's been in business for, I mean, she's gotten a lot of press and has apparently a very good, good business model. But I was just curious, I'm all for entrepreneurs, but I'm wondering if, if we can invest in companies that are going to reap benefits within Cobb County, like maybe it's somebody that wants to start up a daycare company or something like that, that's really going to have a direct influence and impact on the community. I, I think that would be nice. Another thing I'd like to talk about is, and, and you had mentioned that Cobb Douglas Health was going to be presenting. I was hoping it was going to be Dr. Memark because I wanted to find out more about what she had to talk, not about getting the vaccine, but more of what is, you're hearing more and more of every day, which are adverse events from getting the vaccine. The CDC has their VAERS, the Vaccine Adverse Event Reporting System. And that is really only represents a fraction of the adverse events and deaths that have happened from the vaccine. And so I'd, I'd really be more interested in hearing from Dr. Memark on how that has affected Cobb County. Just some articles that are out, heart attacks in people under age fifty were on the rise before COVID-19, but not in athletes until the vaccines rolled out. And then you have people like dying suddenly. You have Caroline Stacnik had three heart attacks at age twenty-three years old due to a military mandated vax. Why was SV-40 a cancer-causing sequence put in the COVID vaccine? Now twenty-year-olds are getting turbo cancer and those who were once in remission have had their cancer come back ten times worse. There was a very good interview, actually, I'm sorry, not interview, presentation with Dr. Peter McCullough. And he spoke to the European Parliament about what is happening with the vaccine, what kind of adverse events are happening. It has impacted me personally with a friend that is brain dead now because of all the vaccines and boosters. And her two siblings are dead. So six kids, two dead, one brain dead. Thank you.
The next speaker is Shanna, Shauna Eckle. The next speaker is Rutledge Wilson.
Hello, Madam Speaker. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you all today. My comments are.
Sir, this may be your first. That's okay. I'm going to help walk through that.
Sorry, my name is Rutledge Wilson.
There you go.
I live at three-eight-seven Shannon Drive.
You don't have to, I don't need to know that. Thank you.
My comments today are about the proposed Noonday Creek Trail extension, which I believe is scoping study number X-two-five-four-four. At least that's what I got off the website. I know the project has been in the planning stages for approximately a year and a half. And during this time, we only learned of this about, within the last two months. And I, myself included and a lot of the property owners on the creek, we didn't know about this planned extension of the trail. So I just wanted to bring that up as well. No one contacted us during that first year and a half. I know they had several public meetings and some signs posted at the parks and things, but there was nothing in our neighborhood and nobody contacted us directly. So that was a concern that I wanted to raise. Gresham Smith Consulting, I think, was the consulting firm that was responsible for having these meetings. So it doesn't fall on you all. You all have been gracious and communicated with me since we contacted you in relation to our concerns of the trail. So I thank you for that. Commissioner Burrell, I thank you as well for coming out to our farm and looking at our, our situation and taking into consideration the situation that we're faced with, with this proposed trail. Thank you. A little bit about our farm, we have a private stable on the creek bottom. We've got about 2,000 feet of creek frontage of pasture land we use for the horses and we train horses professionally and have a lot of high-end horses at the property. So we're a little concerned about not only the safety of the public, but the, the safety of the horses and public having access to the pasture and the horses and the farm, as well as security issues associated with the farm. I speak, I feel like I speak for all with the other, the other members of the property owners that are above us, below us on the creek bottom that are affected by this proposed trail. And right now, we object to the location of the trail and we were asking if the trail could be considered moving it back across to the original location on the west side of the creek. And there's, there's reasons for that. I mean, it would, it would alleviate a lot of contact with the homeowners on our side as well as the risk of the farm and the horses. And I think it would be a huge savings for the taxpayers financially because you wouldn't have to build any bridges across the creek. You could just go right down the other side of the creek. And that, that, there's like four bridges they're going to have to build to cross the creek and cross the ditches and the other creeks on our side and then transition back across the creek after our property is there. We're kind of inclined to fight this, but we're hoping and praying that we don't have to, that it won't come to that as far as fighting illegally. So that said, that's all I have. All right. Thank you for your time and your consideration. I just wanted to voice that I was opposed to the trail being in the location that it is and ask for you to consider other locations for the trail and maybe we can work something out. Thank you.
Next speaker is Steve Zibek.
Good morning. Steve Zubek, three-twenty-six Rockmore Trail. I am also here for the Noonday Extension. The bridges or the path is going to lead like right through the middle of my yard. And I didn't really find out about this until two weeks ago when one of the neighbors had brought this up to me. And, you know, it's, I've, I've lived close to a bicycle trail before and nothing good had come from it. We've gotten robbed, at least we weren't home. And if you've ever been robbed, you really know what it feels like to be violated like that. All your belongings, your cherished possessions just disappeared and there's no way to replace all that. possessions just disappeared, and there's no way to replace all that. And I'm, I'm terrified that the, that this is gonna happen to my home. And, you know, the crime and all that, and just not even be able to relax in your own home, or just go out and cook your dinner or whatever. It's like, it, it's a lot worse than actually having a freeway come right through the back of your yard, because at least nobody's getting out with the bicycle trail. There's gonna be vagrants. People are gonna be hanging out there, the noise from them crossing over the bridge. I don't know if you guys have ever walked a nature trail, and you walk on that bridge, you hear the percussion from the wood hitting and all that. You know, it's just all the above. I won't even be able to have a restless evening, because I'll be trying to listen for sounds and all that. It just totally disrupts almost everything. You know, and then, not only that, but the property value is, is gonna be greatly reduced. But that's not the biggest problem with me. The biggest problem is being able to have a restless night so you can attack the day, and not, not even really being informed that this is what's happening. So I just only wish you guys could maybe reconsider the path of the trail, and maybe go with the, the previous thought plans of it. You know, I've, I've kind of lived next to a trail and have suffered from it. And I just don't really, you know, you just take the beauty from being able to live and enjoy your home. So, you know, I really appreciate your time, and just hope you could reconsider the path of the trail, or, you know, just reconsider it in, in general. But, thank you so much.
Chairwoman, that's the conclusion of the first group of speakers.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Commissioners, why don't we take a five-minute break and come back at 11? Thank you.[728.73]
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve the recommended ranking of the three most qualified firms for engineering design of traffic management center upgrade, Cobb County Project Number B 2583, and authorize negotiations for final scope of services and fees, beginning with the top-ranked firm, AECOM Technical Services Incorporated.
Okay. I believe that's District Four. Am I on the right? Oh, excuse me, that's all, excuse me. So moved as presented?
Second.
Call the question. The motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a consultant services agreement with Thomas Hutton, Thomas and Hutton Engineering Company in an amount not to exceed $620,616.04 for engineering design of Chattahoochee River Trail Pilot Phase Two, Cobb County Project B 2432, authorize a corresponding budget transaction, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Now we have District Four. Go ahead, Commissioner. So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries four one with Commissioner Gamble in opposition.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a grade-crossing elimination agreement with Norfolk Southern Corporation for Old Floyd Road at Veterans Memorial Highway Project Number X 2329, authorize a corresponding budget transaction, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield. So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with Advanced Sports Construction LLC, savings of the project in the amount of $59,072.62 for drainage system repairs on Stony Creek Overlook, Project Number B 2228, authorize a corresponding budget transaction, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
And once again, Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with Accelerated Construction LLC, savings of the project in the amount of $65,494.31 for Chestnut Lake Drive Sidewalk Project Number X 2730, authorize a corresponding budget transaction, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Richardson.
So moved? Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve supplemental agreement number one to the contract with IP Construction LLC for Old Alabama Road Sidewalk Project X 2769, to include school zone improvements at Pebblebrook High School in an amount not to exceed $1,372,716.93, Project Number B 2804, approve a contract time extension through July 15, 2024, authorize a corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Backbone Infrastructure LLC in an amount not to exceed $33,846.50 for Mableton Parkway pedestrian improvements Phase Two, Cobb County Project Number X 2770, authorize a corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved?
Commissioners, this is one as revised.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Second.
All right. Thank you.
As revised.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is everyone aware of the revision? There's just a revision of the accounting number on the second page. Okay, we're good. All right. We'll go ahead, and there was a motion and a second. We'll call the question. The motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with D&amp;H Construction Company Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $534,666.75 for drainage system repairs on Teton Drive, Project Number B 2265, authorize a corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
All right. Commissioner Gamble.
Richardson.
I'm crossing these out. Excuse me, Commissioner Richardson.
So moved? Second.
I am one ahead on my... I don't know. I'm one ahead on all my numbers. Okay. All right. Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Accelerated Construction LLC in an amount not to exceed $461,100 for drainage system repairs on Castile Road at North Cook Road, Project Number B 2276, authorize a corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Now we're at Commissioner Gamble.
So moved? Second.
Call the question. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Lawson Enterprises LLC in an amount not to exceed $282,260 for 2024 resurfacing ADA ramp upgrades south, Project Number B 2914, authorize a corresponding budget transaction, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Here we have multiple commissioners on this one. I'll call Commissioner Richardson.
So moved? Second.
Any discussion?
Excited about this.
Good, good. Well, call the question. The motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Advanced Sports Construction LLC in an amount not to exceed $202,034 for 2024 resurfacing countywide ADA ramp upgrades north, Project Number B 2915, authorize a corresponding budget transaction, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Again, we have multiple commissioners. I'll call Commissioner Gamble.
So moved? Second.
Any comments? Call the question. The motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners ratify a previous action by the county manager authorizing emergency activities on Spring Hill Parkway in response to a storm drainage failure and roadway collapse, approve a contract with CW Matthews Contracting Company Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $25,000 for Spring Hill Parkway Emergency Drainage, Project Number B 22101, authorize a corresponding budget transaction, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Richardson.
So moved? Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero.
Thank you. And our final item this morning is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Advanced Sports Construction LLC in an amount not to exceed $430,093.50 for drainage system repairs on Spring Hill Parkway, Project Number B 22101, authorize a corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Once again, Commissioner Richardson.
So moved? Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
All right, we're at our Support Services tab, and we'll hear from our IS Director.
Good morning, Chairwoman, Commissioners, and County Manager. Our item this morning is a joint item with the Procurement Services Department to request the Board of Commissioners approve a contract and participating addendum with Ask/Reply Incorporated for the B2G Now Supplier Diversity Management System under provisions of the NASBO Value Point and Master Agreement in an amount not to exceed $20124, 2016 Splot Project X 0020, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents as approved by the County Attorney's Office.
All right, so moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. And the motion passes four one with Commissioner Burl in opposition.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. The county attorney has one item that has been withdrawn. It is number 54. So I believe that concludes...
We sent you an email regarding it. It's regarding restrictions, and we're not allowed to put any more restrictions on the funding that is currently being suggested. And so we've seen it work through the agreement with the magistrate court.
Okay, good. So we still will plan on seeing this move through?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Bill. Okay, that takes us to our second public comment.
And the first speaker is Rutledge Wilson, Jr.
Well, it's still morning. Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Rutledge Wilson, Jr., and my son, you have heard from him about our collective opposition to this Noonday Creek Trail. I would like for the Commission to understand that I personally and my family, we as a group are not opposed to the trail per se, just its proposed location through our horse farm where we have been in residence for 50-plus years in the county. And it's interesting to me that two months ago was the first notice that we had that this trail was going to exist through our, and had been deviated from its original path on the west side of the creek, over across the bridges that my son spoke of, to the east side of the creek and down through some 3,000 or 4,000 feet of creek frontage before it goes back to the other side. I don't, I have not been able to understand the deviation from the west side of the creek. And the other fear that we have with having this trail through our horse farm, we have almost a million dollars' worth of horse flesh on this farm. And there have been histories in Cobb County of horses that have been injured by the public. An incident years ago when Howard Rand had his vet clinic on Sewell Mill Row off of Sewell Mill Bill Murdoch Road, someone drove by and shot a stallion, a thoroughbred stallion that he had, shot him with a .22 rifle and killed him. So unless a barrier was created, and certainly the creek in itself is a wonderful barrier with the trail on the other side, to keep any risk to our horses from existing. But at any rate, I wanted to go on the record here as being opposed to the, not opposed to the trail, but opposed to its current location on the east side of the creek. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Senator.
The next speaker is Edward Carroll. Edward Carroll. All right, and the next speaker is Craig Harfley.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Craig Harfley. I want to support the people on this Noonday Creek thing because Cobb County has a history at the one things like this. I mean, and it's almost like you're making a land grab to make things messed up for them, especially when the trail's easier to build on the other side of the creek with no bridges. Now I want to talk about calendars, time. I was walking by the Ag Building years back, and they had cut a bush, and on the cornerstone of the Ag Building, the white marble ones down there around the Capitol, it had a date, and it said AL 5954. And back then, I asked, what's AL? What's AL? And I even called Tommy Irwin, who was in office there at the time. He just said, you know, not much. But it took, I called Emory Library, and they finally told me it was the Masonic calendar. And this year would be 6,623. Well, now on the internet, you can find all this stuff. But in the meantime, I found this other document from 1820, and it was the history of the church. And it was reprinted in 1820 in Philadelphia, and it was from London. And it was dated AM, Anio Mundae, in the Year of the World, is what it means in Latin. And, you know, it didn't seem, you know, it started year one just like AL. It went to 4,000. And then it was, then this document was dated AD, in the year of our Lord. And this is in 1820. And I started searching the internet, and I can't find anything about any of this stuff. And yet, this was something that the Church of England did, you know, as Episcopal, when they broke from Rome, you know? And I can't find the date when they put it together. But anyhow, it's why I say this, because later, they start going BC, you know, and go in the opposite direction, just to confuse all the dates on anything ever written. And Egyptians, they knew there were 365 days in a year. Well, they were quite wrong about that. And they did it by lining up Sirius and the sun. You have to triangulate a position on Earth to get exact point for the Veronal Equinox. That's what they were doing. And anyhow, so they had the whole thing where the sun went around the world until Copernicus. I mean, our science is so, and yet, the dates on documents, you know, recorded history is when, begins in Egypt with, it has to be written to be historic, right? Everything else is before history. And I'm going to run out of time. But anyhow, it's pretty amazing, you know, like, who would know that Sunday is the first day of the week? The sun god's day. Monday is the moon god's day. And in Spanish, it's Martes, Mercuri, Suave, Viernes. They're the names of the planets, Mercury, Mars, Jupiter, and Venus. And in English, Saturday is Saturn Day. It's the seventh day of the week. And, you know, you're all talking about the Sabbath, you know? The whole thing is, I was in York, England in 2006, and it was Constantine who basically paganized Christianity. They had the whole Constantine exhibit, "In This Sign You Conquer." He wanted to use secret Christians and Jews in his army, not afraid of death. So he basically merged Christianity and paganism so that people would fight and not care if they died, you know? They were going to a better place. And to this day, I'm going to have to do part two of the next meeting, but the, most people don't even know these things, and yet they're right here in our face.
Mr. Harfley, I'm sorry, your time's up. The next speaker is Nataya Porter. Nataya Porter. That's the conclusion of your second portion of your speakers.
Thank you, Bill. That takes us to our Commissioners' public address. We'll begin with Commissioner Gamble as soon as her slides pull up.
Join us for a fun night that benefits our neighbors in need. This is a pre-sign up for the 21st Annual Must Gobble Jog. On Thanksgiving morning, more than 10,000 runners will come to the Marietta Square to participate in the 21st Annual Gobble Jog benefiting must ministries. Be sure to come out and support the Gobble Jog by coming to the Horned Owl Brewing today, Tuesday, October 10, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. The Horned Owl Brewing is located at 2765 South Main Street in Kennesaw. It's pumpkin season, and you can find the pumpkins. The caretakers at Kemp Park have hidden lots of mini pumpkins throughout the park again this year. Bring your little ones and help them find a pumpkin to take home. Kemp Park is located at 4331 Burt Hickory Road Northwest in Marietta. Wear pink in October. October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Early detection is the best protection. To all our warriors out there, a hero is an ordinary individual who finds the strength to preserve and endure in spite of the overwhelming obstacles. To learn more, you can visit the nationalbreastcancer.org website. And lastly, the pumpkins have returned to the BOC room. Thank you for all of the departments that have participated. We are going to shake things up a little bit though this year, and we are going to be awarding two prizes, one for the highest donation, which will benefit Safe Path, and the other for the most creatively decorated pumpkin, which I think is going to be very difficult this year. And we will be deciding on who our guest judges will be. Voting is open now until Monday, October 23, and the winner will be announced at the Board of Commissioners meeting on Tuesday, October 24. Each dollar donated counts as one vote, so $25 equals 25 votes for your favorite pumpkin. To cast your votes, you can visit safepath.org and click Donate Now. In the top right corner, you can enter your information and the amount you wish to donate. In the Tribute section, select "in honor of" from the drop-down menu, and enter the name or the number of the pumpkin you want to win. Again, all proceeds will benefit Safe Path Children Advocacy Center, working towards a community free of child abuse. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll go to Commissioner Richardson.
Definitely loving that one-piece pumpkin. I'm an anime fan, I know. And the BOC, so I'm a little biased. I did want to take a personal, point of personal privilege here and say, isn't this the cutest, the cutest little thing? I guess Aaliyah is here in spirit with us, so thank you guys for this. And just as an FYI, yes, Aaliyah is running for SGA at Harvard right now, so...
Wow, I hope she gets it.
Yeah.
She's running for office. I wonder where she got that?
I don't know. I don't know. She had it in her all along. All right. So District Two, from the office, wanted to share yesterday, of course, Columbus Day and Recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day. Both of them exist, and we do appreciate celebrating both of those as a part of just our nation's history and also our nation's history. So certainly, our offices were open as we honored those lives and of America's first inhabitants. And as we enter the holiday season, please visit the Cobb County website to see when our offices are closed. October is Cyber Security Awareness Month. Learn how to stay safe. You heard the announcement during public comment from Kevin, who's been working very closely with our departments too, and Megan. Appreciate it, just all the hard work and pulling everyone together so that we can have a very informative event for the community. And I believe there's a really cute video that's going to be going out, doing some tips as well, if you cannot attend. But you can learn how to lock down your personal information and protect yourself from cyber threats during October as part of the National Security Awareness Month, Cyber Security Awareness Month. Come to our cybersecurity education event from 9:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Friday, October 20, at the Senior Services Dinner Theater to hear online safety presentations from the Cobb County Sheriff's Office, Cobb County District Attorney's Office, Cobb Information Services, which has changed its name, congrats, it was voted on today, Splunk, Cisco, Department of Homeland Security, and more. This helpful knowledge is brought to you by the D2 Office and the County Information Services Department. Visit d2cobb.com/events to register today. Postponed, our D2 Quarterly Report, the Quarterly Report event is scheduled, that was scheduled for October 17, has now been postponed to November 16, from 5:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Scouts of America in the Coart Room. This will be an opportunity to hear end-of-year updates across the district and plans for the future. We wanted to make sure there was enough space all the way to the World Series before we had this event. So please scan that QR code. And then from the community, we've got the Fall Book Sale, opens its doors 9:00 a.m. at Cobb Civic Center and runs through the weekend, October 13 through the 15. You may find treasures among the books, DVDs, books on CD, and audio cassettes, and look for hidden gems like comics or vinyl records. Yeah. Prices range from 10 cents to $4. Hours are 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Friday and Saturday, then 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. Sunday. All profits from this book sale go directly to buying more items for Cobb County Public Libraries, 15 branches, and Bookmobile. For more information, please visit cobcounty.org livery. And lastly, the new voter registration deadline is today. This Tuesday, October 10, is the deadline for submitting a new voter registration, a change to your name, residential address, or to make an additional, make additional updates prior to the November 2023 election. All registrations submitted after the Tuesday deadline will be processed once the election cycle has ended. So make sure you rush to get that submitted. You can call 770-528-2581 for more information, or go to the My Voter page to check your status. That concludes all of my announcements. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Richardson. Commissioner Burl.
Thank you. Well, first of all, congratulations again to Melissa and Ms. Schultz for the E911 Awards, National Awards, and also to Cobb Police for the Real-Time Crime Center and Public Safety that we honored earlier this morning. And also, last week, we attended the Cobb Chamber of Commerce for Public Safety Appreciation Week, the awards here. And as you can see, our own Field Training Officer, Taylor Stanford, Cobb County Police Department, won the Public Safety Employee of the Year. The Award of Merit went to Kennesaw Police Officer Jared Wheeler and Officer Blake Arnold, and Cobb County Police Sergeant Cody Thompson, Officer Andrew Brock, Officer Jessica Richardson... That's almost you. Kennesaw Police Department and Cobb County Police Department, Station 1 and 2 Seashift, Ostel Fire Department. The Distinguished Achievement Award went to Training and Quality Assurance Manager Todd Barowski from Cobb County Emergency Communications. Outstanding Community Contribution Award went to Officer Paul Hill and Canine Barney from the Marietta Police Department. And the Medal of Valor Awards went to Officer Tanisha Palashi with Acworth Police, Deputy Sheriff Jeremy Hudgens, and Deputy Sheriff Randall Lossing from Cobb County Sheriff's Office, Detective Brian Bridges, Detective Dustin Shirley, Officer Michael Calhoun, Officer Christian Gutierrez, and Agent Quinn Lyles of the Cobb County Police Department. So if you see any of those folks or any of our police, public safety, and thank them for their service, and tell them how much we appreciate them every day. The next How to Do Business with Cobb County seminar is October 26, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Senior Wellness Center. The event is free, but you do need to register so we can have a head count. You can learn about vendor opportunities, meet Cobb government and Cobb school representatives, network with business owners, and hear about the local vendor preference ordinance. Please register by calling Kim Jorgensen Persinger at 770-528-3317, or kimberly.jorgensen@cobcounty.org. Wednesday, October 18, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Mountain View Library Meeting Room at 3320 Sandy Plains Road, we will have a DOT Open House for the Shallowford Road-Gordie Parkway Intersection Improvements. There will be stations set up and staff to answer any questions. This is a 22 Splot project, and we are looking at improvements to that intersection, very heavily traveled intersection near our Harrison Park and also Lassiter High School. And we're up to 248 adoptions from our Superior Pets for Patriotic Bits Adoption Program. Ms. Brown on the left here served in the U.S. Navy for nine years, and I don't know who's more excited, her or her pup, to get a forever home. He's, he's really ready to go. And then on the right here is our own Officer Michael Justice. He served in the U.S. Army for six years, and now he's one of our own Community Affairs Unit Officers, and he does a fantastic job. And he's taken home this cute pup, too. Many of you out there know Donna Rowe. She is a Vietnam Vet. She served in, as a nurse in Vietnam in the Triage Unit, and she's just an amazing woman. She's president of the Cobb Veterans Memorial Foundation, and she's retiring after 40 years in real estate, and she's also turning 80 on October 12. She doesn't know I'm doing this. She's probably going to kill me for announcing her age, but she's very special and dear to Cobb County. She served many, many, many roles, and we wish her the best, and we have declared October 12 as Donna Rowe. 12th as Donna Rowe Day in Cobb. In light of the recent attacks on Israel, I'd like to offer my support and say that I stand with Israel, and also ask for prayers for Israel. This is a horrific event over there that they're fighting, and they need our support and prayers. So my heart goes out to all those that have lost loved ones, and we have a great Jewish community in Cobb, so reach out to your neighbors and friends and family. God bless. And last but not least, go Braves! I don't know how many stayed up and watched that game last night, but it was so exciting. I know Jake's in the audience chopping. He was there and screaming. He doesn't have a voice today. That was very exciting, and the, I was at the game Saturday, but we lost. So on to Philadelphia, we got to sweep them up there and come back here. So get out your tomahawks, everyone. Thank you.
District Four News and Updates. For nearly four decades, October has been recognized as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. The month is devoted to educating and bringing awareness to breast cancer. Breast cancer is the most diagnosed non-skin cancer and the second leading cause of cancer death for Georgia women. Through routine screening and early detection, 97% of women can survive five years or more. The Heritage Hills, and what you guys see here is just a snapshot from my In the Zone Community Zoning Meeting. But the Heritage Hills Shopping Plaza, also known as the Hobby Lobby Plaza, has undergone redevelopment over the past couple of years. Improvements have been made to the building facade, parking lot, repavement, and landscaping. There would be several new tenants that will occupy suites that have been vacant for years. I am especially excited to share that we anticipate an Olive Garden opening in late 2024. Additional retailers include Aguevero Cantina, Burn Bootcamp, Eggs Up Grill, Five Below, Florin Decor, and Tea Leaf Creamery. Sign up for my newsletter for future updates. Join the Mableton Improvement Coalition and the Austell Community Task Force as they host a town hall to discuss education-related Senate Bills 48 and 1084. Panelists include former State Representative Alicia Thomas Ceracy, Cobb School Board Member Leroy Trey Hudgens, and Becky Saylor, and educator Kimberly Gregory. The town hall will be on Thursday, October 12th, at 7:00 p.m. via Zoom. Please scan the QR code on your screen to register. Are you looking to improve your basketball skills? Osborne High School, in collaboration with Cobb Police Athletic League, will host a Free Basketball Skills Camp on October 17th and 18th, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. The camp is co-ed and ranges from ages seven to 17. For information, contact Osborne High School at 770-437-5900. Chief Magistrate Judge Brendan Murphy will host a pop-up legal clinic on Saturday, October 21st, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the First Christian Church of Mableton. Volunteer attorneys will offer free legal advice in the areas of family law, small claims, landlord/tenant, bankruptcy, probate, and immigration. You must bring important documents and arrive by 10:30 a.m. to register. The First Christian Church of Mableton is located at 878 Old Alabama Road in Mableton. And finally, Linked Up Church, in partnership with Goodwill, will host a job fair on Wednesday, October 25th, from 10:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. The event will bring together more than 25 employers from diverse sectors eager to meet potential candidates and offer a variety of job opportunities. Linked Up Church is located at 4331 Brownsville Road in Powder Springs. For additional information, visit linkedupchurch.com, or contact Minister Kimberly Savage at k savage at linkedupchurch.com, or simply scan the QR code on your screen. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. In addition to prior comments, I'd like to congratulate all of the winners of the Cobb Chambers 2023 Public Safety Appreciation Luncheon. On Thursday, November 9th, Cobb County will be hosting an information session for those interested in our supplier diversity effort through our disparity study. This will be a virtual meeting, and registration information can be found online through our Our Youth Commission has applications that are now open. The applications will be due October 27th. For more information, you can also visit Cobb County's homepage, or email my assistant Like to welcome Adriana Helenette to our office as our Hispanic and Latin American Community Liaison. She has extensive experience serving the Spanish-speaking and Latin community within Cobb County. And in fact, I just wanted to open up a little bit of information about her. She's a Mexican-American political leader, community organizer, and activist. She is a law graduate, and she's a Mexican attorney licensed to practice all throughout Mexico, and in the U.S. she is a mediator. She has worked for six years in the Protection Department at the Consulate General of Mexico in Atlanta, and she's recognized as a specialist in mitigating and contacting victims of crime and death penalty cases in Georgia and Texas. She's also a promoter of restorative justice and a defender of human rights of migrants in the United States, and her efforts for activism have resulted in her being a recipient of awards and being recognized by the state of Morelos in Mexico. Adriana is a founder of Americans By Choice. This is a nonprofit that represents the rights of immigrants, and she also is a group called Mexicans By Heart, which is a group of 900 Mexican women here in metro Atlanta. She has been received very well by members of the Hispanic community because she's been serving on the ground for many years, and we're very grateful to have her. Next, I'd like to recognize our Cobb 101 graduates. We've heard from one today during public comment, and we had a class of 30 that graduated just this past Thursday. I want to share a heartfelt thank you to Drew Wrestler, and also to Sharon Mason. They are directors here in Cobb County that led this year's class. For those of you who are not familiar with Cobb 101, it's a 10-week program that provides an in-depth look to many of our agencies and functions within county government. All of our classes have about 30 participants, and you either have to live in Cobb or be a business owner in Cobb to participate. Anyone above 18 can apply. In fact, if you're under 18, you may want to consider the Youth Commission program. Applications are generally out in the summer. For those of you who are interested, please check out our newsletters come next year. Also, and finally, down to my last town hall meeting, which will be held at Kennesaw State University. We've had seven or eight town halls throughout Cobb County over the past two months. Again, another heartfelt thank you to all of the staff that has been attending these. I know it's a commitment to be at work all day, and then to be at these meetings all night, but I could tell you that the residents have valued your participation and ability to answer their questions. And as has been shared, something that we should all be looking forward to twice every year, spring and fall, is the annual book sale. We have books, I say "we" like I'm actually giving this, but we have books on sale, we have DVDs, just great textbooks that you can find for, I think, a max value of $4. And if you come later on Sunday, I think the price even goes down to 50% of that price. So just come out, we're at the Civic Center, it's a great time every year, and we raise a lot of money to help our library foundation. With that, thank you all for tuning into today's meeting, and look forward to you joining us at our zoning meeting next week, Tuesday, or our next nightly meeting, which will be October 24th at 7:00 p.m. Thank you, and our meeting is adjourned. Thank you, and our meeting is adjourned.